Hi, Shelly and Deb. I'm sorry I'm not there for your presentation in person.
You're set?
You're set.
All right. Well, welcome everyone to this meeting of the Westminster School Board. A meeting at six o'clock at the Westminster Center School on June 5th. So we are called to order. There's a round of introductions for the public. Start.
Andy Hopps.
Margie Berry, Westminster School Board.
Hello, I'm just on the Westminster School Board.
Hi, Cheryl Charles, Westminster.
Erin Blanchard, Westminster School Board.
Liz Hardy, Central Westminster Center School.
Nicole Barnett, Admin Assistance.
And let's hear from a few other people because you'll speak tonight.
Um, Kat Vidal.
Wonder.
Shelley Wilson, Director of Student Family Systems for RSU.
Cardine, Director of Instruction.
Yes, you.
Thank you.
You know more.
Oh, of course. Thank you. Team, you managed to do that. Can you introduce yourself?
I was just saying, technology is so amazing. I'm Team BLC Westminster School Board.
Perfect. Thank you. Thank you for making the effort to join us in transit. Yeah, exactly. So we do have content adjustments to the agenda. One of them under old unfinished business, there's no action, but it would be a report of the rural school. Community along with just an update on all of that. And we also should list under reports and maybe a part of the principal's report. But a report from the school nurse, Kat Vidal. So we're delighted to have Kat here tonight. And let me see if there are any communications and public comments. I actually expected June Streeter to come, so she may turn up at some point. We'll welcome her if she does. Review and approve the minutes on May 22nd. Can I have a motion? I'm hoping something like this. All right, motion on the floor. It is definitely an addition to corrections. Um, for me, you know, when we were talking about Houseville 454. It referred to as talking about economic concerns. I have a host of concerns about that proposed legislation. So maybe you could just modify it to say economic and other concerns. Be on the more accurate about about all of that. Modus correction. All those in favor of approving the minutes? Aye. Aye. Any votes? All right, Team, how do you vote on the minutes?
Yes.
Thank you. Perfect. All right. So with that, we'll move right into reports. And Andy, I know that we don't have Ed here, and I do want to hold the finance report. Maybe we could start with the principal's report.
Yeah, I don't, he did not actually give me a report or a printout, so I don't have anything to be able to report on. But if there are questions, I'm happy to bring them back. Don't.
No problem at all. I actually had a chance to meet with Ed earlier this week. And I know that some of this is relevant to the principal's report and some of the program. But in talking with him, and we are in June, our books close June 30th. He's really busy with closing all the books and I thought it was fine for him not to generate a new report at this time. And and I, Margie, I also talked to him a little bit about the questions you and I have had about the reporting system. And we've thought about it, but if we go into the detailed report, the spreadsheet, the Excel spreadsheet, we can actually find what I've been looking for. Rather than that just summary. So you and I can talk about that further, but I told him it was fine for him not to prepare a report for this meeting. And we'll have one when it's year end, which is very soon. So with that, we'll go to the principal's report.
Sure. As of last week, our year-to-date attendance rate was 94%. It has fluctuated throughout the year around 94, 95%. Event updates, last time we met was right before there was the change in the last day of school. We had to shuffle in a few dates around. Our field day will be held next Friday, June 13th. This is a fun tradition where students participate in a variety of activities outside. We hope that the fire department will be able to do their fire hose again. That's a real poor memory maker. And I'm just still getting in touch with fire department right now. Our sixth grade success night is scheduled for Tuesday, June 10th at six o'clock. It'll be in the gym this year. That's what the students would confirm. They would like to be in the gym, so that's where it will be. Acknowledgement celebration, as you know, our school is moving into being more officially PBIF school. And part of that is acknowledging when students demonstrate our core, our school-wide agreements of being kind, being safe, and taking care of our community. Every 2,000 acknowledgements, so we have a bulletin board right by the dining room that has these top prints. And when we reach the top of the mountain, we celebrate as a school. So some celebrations we've had, we had a school-wide scavenger hunt that went from grade to grade. We had jump rope for heart, where we also added sidewalk chalk and bubbles. And then this past Friday was our last one that we'll probably be able to get in this year, which was a glow dance of the gym. So it was really a surprise and DJ Bridget got on the radio and said, you know, maybe the gym. And so we had music and students had loaded our glasses and they just went wild for roughly 15 minutes. That's as much, but it was so fun. It's so fun doing things like that as a community. Yeah, this establishes what we already, the good things we have going on. So Andy, if I want to share the data, the rest of my report really is data that's reflected in the slideshow that I can talk.
Pull it up and then you just go to share screen on your.
Okay. Great. So this is an overview of academic data. We'll start and then we'll get into the Panorama Student Family and Staff Survey.
Said we weren't going to, so intro. So we're just continuing district-wide. We're continuing district-wide to work to improve. So that happens as a district, but it also happens in the schools. And what we're sharing tonight is really our spring data. We brought some district data as a point of comparison to your school data.
Yeah.
But I just wanted to point out, we plan, we do, we study, we act, and then we plan some more. So right now, we're really studying how do we do this year? We do this as a whole team and we do this and Liz is doing this with her staff. Assessment tools that you're going to hear about today are specifically meant for that. Our MAP, NWA MAP, which is Measures of Academic Progress. That's a computer-based assessment. We deliver it K through 11. And it's really measuring achievement and growth, which is two different measurements. You saw that in the report. We'll show you some graphs to support that same information. Deb, just a quick time up for a minute. Team, can you see any of this? Are you able to see this?
Yeah, yeah, I can see the slides.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. The other assessment we're going to hear about, that is again, we give it three times a year, same with MAP. Is to look at, first, we use it to screen our kids and really target our focus for who needs support. And now we're really using it at the end of the year to to look at broad trends of how are we, how are we doing over years? How are we doing fall to spring? It stands for Dynamic Indicators, basically Literacy Skills. This is, I think you've heard this before, might feel familiar. This is delivered one-on-one. We utilize it here at K through six, and it's really looking at those foundational skill areas. And the real point there is that it predicts risk for later reading challenges. So they're both slightly different, but we really aim for them to align. And we appreciate that they can kind of give us a checkpoint and should have yet. Does that mean every child gets that one-to-one assessment? Yes. Okay, thank you. They're one minute. Takes one minute.
So right here is MAP. MAP data comparing last spring to this spring. The green charts here are the district. So the district proficiency, last year, district proficiency growth, so proficiency and growth. So last year, we had, as a supervisor reunion, 40% proficient per the MAP. This spring, the district has 49% proficient. So as far as growth, that means there was a 54, which is within the average range of growth in MAP, per the MAP. Please correct me, Deb, if I'm not.
I know, I'm working on this too.
Yeah. This spring, we're at six, the supervisor reunion as a whole is at 62%. So if we look at Westminster specifically, we were at last spring, 48% proficiency. This spring, we're at 58% proficiency. So this spring, we had 72, which is above-average growth. So that's really something we're really proud of. We had 60, I think, is still within the average range, and 72 per MAP is above-average growth.
Both of those are referring to our students. So 72% of our students showed met or exceeded the percentile we would expect.
Yes.
So what's unique about MAP? We all have to kind of wrap it. They look, go ahead. You want to?
So I would see it as like, every child is expected to have a year growth. But we had 72% of our, 72% of our students had maybe a year, year-plus growth. So it's higher growth average than one would expect. That accurate? That's how I read it.
I think it's like they, that that's 72%, either met or exceeded the expected growth. So in that 72%, some of them made a year or more.
It has the expected growth.
Expected growth is calculated based on a national, so many people in the nation use this assessment, so it's a norm, like a Belker. Whereas the numbers on the left are the proficiency. The numbers on the right are the growth. Like to see both go up.
Yeah. This is just MAPs, okay, specifically.
That's all great.
K six.
K, K 11 for.
Oh, the SU is K 11?
SU's K 11.
Our specific data.
Well, it's a bit applesauce.
Yeah, we can't, unless we do a lot of teasing out, we can't pull the district MAP just case tools back. Those gives us a little more flexibility. Okay, all right.
I will say something. Sorry, obviously I have to say something about math data. I will say that 10% growth in proficiency rate is is very impressive. Like that's, that's usually like you put it on a CIP or whatever goal and you're like, oh yeah, that's that's shooting high. But that's, so that is really awesome to see that 48 to 58% like percent proficient growth is awesome.
Great. Thank you, Team. Okay, but now we're going to go into the MAP ELA. So similar graphs, but now we're talking English Language Arts. So Westminster specifically, last year was at 45% proficiency. Now we're at 54% proficiency in a year. We were at 59 percentile growth. We're still within the average range of 66 percentile of growth compared to the SU numbers there.
Just thinking as I was coming up, what would be very interesting to see is the whole, is the proficiency of sixth graders year on year. Does the school as a whole increases proficiency by the time the kids get to sixth grade?
Like the same cohort?
Yeah. Well, I think to the local, succeeding cohort doesn't get, is proficiency slightly lower than previously?
But you're, you're comparing now truly apples, apples to oranges to bananas, because each cohort is different. So if you're comparing to sixth grade every time, you're, you would have to know their entire trend of what they.
Yeah. Well, and you could see that. If you made a chart, just like your attendance chart. Proficiency and grade, a year and grade proficiency. Every box is the proficiency at that grade on that year. Hope you would see horizontally, the proficiency increases over time. Ironically, I would also hope you see the proficiency increases back to, obviously, there's anomalies and blah, blah. You would see over time. Is that happening?
We can pull, I think what you're describing is, can we look at sixth grade across time? As a sixth grade unit, and then can we look at cohorts across time? And I think that is, if we can do that with some calculating and digging, yes.
I noticed earlier, you only had a couple of years in this program. Over time, it would be great to watch it.
Well, especially with the implementation of the new curriculum tools that we have. And the variety of MTSS discussion structures that we've established. I think that would be really exciting to watch as students have had like direct bonus instruction from K and how that spreads. Because our largest growth grades were both in second and third grade. So I believe, it was in my principal's report, but I believe our second grade started off at 50% proficient at the beginning of the year per MAP. And then is ending at 80% provision as shown by MAP. So it is similarly in third grade as well. So that also tells that, you know, our second graders had direct bonus instruction in first grade. With the same tool that they're using now. Our third graders had that same tool that they're using now in second grade. So it just, it'll be interesting to see how that goes.
We didn't see the slides ahead of time, so are you doing the grade level breakdown in here? We will not do the grade level in here, partially because of the time it takes for it to weather. But also, we are cautious to do it at a school level because the premises are small. Right. So we will do it for sure as a district, and we do do that as a district.
Right. Too small to share.
Yeah, there's like legalities around.
Yeah. But let's move into DIBELS, which is the other assessment that Deb was talking about. So again, this is the SU. So now, Deb, is this K?
This is K through third.
Okay.
Specifically because that was, we can look at that side.
Okay, so this, and this is over the years. So you see, we have, we have lots of work to do still, but we have a steady increase in proficiency. For DIBELS.
DIBELS measure puts three pieces together, reading, passage. Well, in third grade, it's many more, actually. Reading a passage, letter knowledge, sound, can take sounds apart. So a lot gets mushed into these combinations of the kids' proficiency. So I'm going to show you a next slide that gives you a portrait of kind of all of them.
Right, because this is, they call it moving colors, right? So if you're well below benchmark, you'd be a red. Below benchmark, you'd be yellow. And then above, it's a green, or at, it's a green and above's blue. And so you obviously want to see kids moving colors, but there's lots of work to be done by going from like deep red to kind of light red. There's still so much rope that has to happen there. And so this is an example of that growth, Deb, if you want to explain this one, this is just a snapshot of the student.
Exactly. And this is the kind of things, this is what we look at with teachers, right? And this is what teachers are using diligent across time. This is DIBELS. This is a real student. What you see in the left is their benchmark score from the fall, which says well below, to the spring, which is yellow or like, like Liz was saying, moving the band, but still considered below. So those graphs that we were looking at, kid, a percent of kids who are proficient, this child still wouldn't show up as proficient yet. But it has made tremendous growth. So all those that list, letter names, decoding, word reading, those are the things we're measuring consistently across the year as we deliver instruction. And when we don't see the progress we want, we need adjustments. The graph on the side is that tracking, that very close tracking that an interventionist or classroom teacher is doing. And then the bottom is showing, at the beginning of the year, we use specific assessments to say exactly where are they challenged. And then the teachers, the interventionists, and sometimes special educators work together to address that and close that gap across the year. So they're measuring those specific skills all year until they, the spring, are what we call cleaned up. And their ability to read accurately increases. Yeah.
Just, just to me too, like the most, as Deb and Shelly have talked about this, the most important score up there is like that, the reading accuracy. Like the fact that that has increased so much is like the kid has the tools in place. They just have to like, now it's like time to get reading. So I think that's one of the big things where you don't see it show up right away in like their overall proficiency score. But that's the one that like you really want to, that is important to see.
Absolutely. So this snapshot is showing that this child was reading 81% of the words correctly in allotted time. And now they're reading 98% of the words. Like they were reading 21 words in a set of time. Now they're reading 81 words. Right, that's just huge growth in a year's time. It still doesn't set them at being proficient, but there's just a lot of work that's happened in the year. And the red that you see at the bottom was like, they don't know how to read this stuff or this stuff. Diagnose that, taught specifically that in the last practice, so then be able to buy it to read. And to get this chart for a given, literally only takes one minute to diagnose that? Oh, no, no, no. The measures that you're seeing in the middle, letter sounds, decoding, word reading, those each are one. Okay, okay. And then as kids get older, there's less of them. When they're younger, we do many of those to close up all the things that we want to make sure they've gotten placed. By the time they're fifth and sixth grade, it's, it's one, one-minute measure. And then a classroom assessment. The things at the bottom are a little more in the stats. So we only use those diagnostics when a student is flagged for it. Are we in our third year using these measures in DIBELS? Well, it's the, I'm in my third year and you had just started in the year before, so I think maybe you're in your fourth year.
We did a limited rollout year one. And it was driven through psychological education year one.
Right.
But then we expanded very quickly.
This is individualized diagnostic that I had not seen before until we brought this in. And it is really enlightened that we're seeing the kind of individualized progress in there.
Yeah, so if you look at this too, so this, these larger circles are the benchmarks. And all these little circles are their progress monitoring. So that's their little dipsticks through the, throughout the intervention to make sure they're headed in the right direction. So those, that would help the educator adjust instruction based on what the sticker tells them.
Okay, all right. Now we're going to go into the Panorama Climate Survey. Here comes Shelly.
Here I come. I came over here because the, the H back is a little loud. So yeah, so pivoting to the Westminster Climate Survey data, do you, yeah, perfect. And I have a glare, so I'll look at my computer. So just as a reminder, this is our third year, I believe, that the Panorama surveys have been administered district-wide. We survey students, families, and staff. And the survey topics, I won't read them to you, but they're listed there and you can, you know, again, review this. We try to keep the survey topics consistent from year to year, so we have those nice comparisons. And then we also have normed data that Panorama gives us. They are in place in thousands, if not, I don't want to say hundreds of thousands, at least tens of thousands of districts across the country. So there is a nice, robust collection of data where we can compare ourselves to other districts like us, but also other schools like us. So there is that kind of drill down ability, which is nice. The results for Westminster's survey were very favorable. Oh, it's got one of these. Just, just click through till it's all. I didn't do that on purpose. I wasn't that fancy. So 97% of eligible students took the survey compared. And just, I threw in a district comparison, district-wide, we had 71% of eligible students take the survey. So that was a, was an awesome participation rate. We had 36 Westminster families took the survey, which the math, real quick, Team, I did it right before the meeting, was 33% of our responses were actually from Westminster, so very high participation rate there. And then staff and teachers combined, we had 37 participants take the staff and teacher survey, which is about 28% of the total responses, district-wide. Just as a reminder, Panorama lists response in this terminology called percent favorable. So this example gives you, you know, this is like the type of actual question that a student or staff member or family member would see on the survey. So in this example, how excited are you about going to this class? And then there are five answer choices, ranging from not at all excited all the way up to very excited. And so Panorama takes the two top choices in a survey question. So in this particular example, they would count quite excited and very excited as the percentage of favorable responses. So one of the things that, I don't, I don't want to discount the data in any way, but I do want to just flag that one thing we've noticed in our third year of examining this data as, as a team, is that those middle-of-the-road answers, like somewhat. is that those middle of the road answers, like somewhat excited, which is like, eh, so you know, right in the middle, those are counted as not favorable. So it is something that we, you know, notice and wonder about as we look at the data.
Yeah, questions like, how often does your teacher help you? And if a student were to respond, sometimes, right, that's not considered favorable. So it's just, obviously, we are using this data to plan for next year and I'll bring this data to my ILT, to my staff and to the team when we go to the VAST Institute and later in June. But, um, I just want people to know that, but that's like, depending on the child, they might say, yeah, sometimes.
Yeah.
You know, like, that's a favorable response to them, but per Panorama. So this is our student three through five. So all of our responses are in a high percentage, like, are in the high range per Panorama. But as you can see, we did dip in many areas.
Compared to?
Last year.
Yes, yes. So I'm going to share a couple celebrations that will show the three-year, um, journey. But this is just all the categories where we ended up. So, you know, school belonging was at seventy-three percent preferable.
Favorable.
Favorable, thank you. And last year was, um, seventy-five. Yes, they're all very close.
Okay. And as Liz pointed out, you know, the, the, the great thing that I see on this data result is the percentile ranks. So to go back to school belonging, you know, that may have dipped from last year two percentage points. But the, when compared to all the other districts and all the other kiddos that took this survey, that favorable response is above the eightieth percentile. So that's pretty awesome.
This is our sixth grade. We just have a really magical sixth grade this year who has really, um, gelled together. So these are responses specifically just from our sixth grade because the survey is three through five and then six through twelve. Huge increases in there. And you see that in there, the way they operate as a grade level too.
What do you think they understand by the term school engagement? They're not apparently sort of separate by.
Yeah, the question is not, it doesn't ask about school engagement. The questions fall under that umbrella category. So, um, an example of that type of question might be, how excited are you to go to school? So it's not, they don't generally use a word, a vocabulary word like above the, you know, I mean, sixth graders would know what engagement means, but maybe not like the concept. So, and I can, I'm happy to share the questions too, if that's helpful.
A bunch of questions.
Yeah, exactly. So there, there might be eight to ten questions on school engagement. And it's like, how excited are you to go to school? Things like that.
And just for my own clarification again, if many of them hit that middle.
Yeah.
Yes.
That's going to be seen as a negative.
Right.
In Panorama.
And they're like, somewhat excited.
Right.
It's not favorable. Um, or.
Going to a lot of sixth graders?
Yeah. Or how often do you talk about what you've learned at school at home? That's a question too around engagement, that's a thing. Uh, if you're like, sometimes, it's not considered favorable. Again, we, I don't want to discount the data because we definitely are leaning into that and we'll plan in here next year, but it's just a nice.
Seventeen percent increase.
Yeah, yeah, I know. Um, so a few, this is just the journey of sixth grade data around school belonging. So two years ago, we had thirty-seven, we dipped to thirty-four, now we're up to sixty-three percent. And this is again, it's like really cohort specific. All right, this is around teacher-student relationships for sixth graders. And then we have, this is three through five. And I wanted to note this, this is around rigorous expectations in grades three through five, but I think this is a direct result of our new curricular tools that we have and the rigor that those tools present to our students and allow our staff to use questioning tools, discussion protocols that really lean deeply into content. So I was excited to see that. So this is the student survey compared to the district.
And, and last year.
Right.
So, no, I was just going to interject, you know, when Liz and I were discussing, you know, how we wanted, how to align and present the data, thought that it would be a common question, how do we do versus last year? And how did we do versus the district? So the, the yellow is this year's, uh, third through fifth graders. And then to the left is last year, third through fifth graders, and to the right is the district, um, number, third through fifth graders. And again, there's a lot to digest here, so we won't, we won't go through every, every data.
This degree, none of the variations are significant, are they?
Right, yeah. Fifty-two percent to fifty-seven percent, you know, it's not huge dips or huge gains here.
I know. They really went up.
Yeah, they, they really work so cohesively and it's really magical.
Yeah, so.
This is just sixth.
You'll see that variability in this chart, like going from last year's sixth grade, um, rated, uh, responded thirty-four percent favorably, this year it's sixty-three percent favorably. So that's.
Those are huge jumps, yeah.
The district just sixth graders.
Uh, that is, well, good question, that is, that comes from grades six through twelve. Yeah, and there's no way to isolate it with just.
I just want to.
No, it's a good question.
In, in this, the WCS spring twenty twenty-four is the sixth grade that year.
Yes, that was here last year.
Not the same.
Yeah, right, different kids.
Okay.
Now, this is the family survey. We had thirty-six families. Um, there was, you know, there's not much movement. All within, um, the, you know, above eighty percent.
Except for that bottom one, even less.
Well, that's interesting because those questions are really around the parent availability. Some questions might be, um, how often do you meet with your child's teacher? You know, and a favorable response would be every week I talk to me. But that's not, that's not typical to talk to families.
It's the parents.
Yes.
Not the parents view of the students.
No, no, this is the parents engagement with the school, which is up four percent than previous year.
I, I also like if you're meeting with your kid's teacher every week.
Wouldn't that not be favorable? If you want to not be, depends on.
So like, one of the questions is, how often do you meet in person with your child's teacher?
Right, but does that mean there's something going sideways? Are you having to do that?
Right, or it's, or, or Margie, it's like an unrealistic expectation to like meet with every kid's parent once a week. I, I just find this level for Westminster surprising because I feel like Westminster does such a good job with family engagement. Like, you guys, there are so many opportunities for us to come in and see what the kids are doing, whether it's like the school-wide literacy breakfast, or it's the harvest meal, or it's the concerts, like, I'm always like, what, what is this about? I think, I, I find that Westminster does a beautiful job with this.
Maybe the questions are.
No, so, so another question is, how involved have you been in a parent group in your child's school? So that's got a low response. And then the next question, in the past year, how often have you discussed your child's school with other parents from the school? Forty-two percent, that's way. So it's how people are reading those questions, right? Like, how often have you helped out at your child's school? That's pretty good.
Right, because people are working, maybe it's a title job, it's not realistic. Um, but this is just, um, area of celebration, school fit over the past three years, growing by more points. And then this is compared to the district. So the yellow, like we did with the other chart, the yellow is this year's percentile favorable last year and then next year.
All grades, all families.
Yes.
No, no, uh, age level distinction, this is just all the families and, uh, parents guardians that respond.
Now we're going to go into the staff. So this one is broken up into two sections, there's teacher survey and staff survey. So the teacher survey are my, uh, my classroom teachers, my special education case managers, my essentialists, and then staff.
Is everybody?
Is everybody else? So that would be the nurse, school nurse, paraprofessional staff, um, our.
Custodian. No custodian, no, I didn't know we did.
No, no. Um, so that's, this is the overview. Do a couple celebrations.
Can we get it last year and that was the first time for the teachers in the stall?
Correct, yeah.
So this is, these growth numbers, the plus is only from last year to this year.
Yes.
But they're still significant.
Yes.
Yeah, and I would say, Liz, don't go on this too far, there is some, I mean, I want to to Westminster and your collective horn here because there are some pretty phenomenal, um, you know, there's some pretty phenomenal data on these slides, you know, that represent the thoughts and feelings of the staff and teachers at Westminster. And, um, especially the teacher survey, every single category is at the eightieth percentile or above when compared to others, other schools across the country. So I just really want to put a big shout out.
Yeah. And I wanted to share this one, which is around, um, the evaluation system, which they observe for success is different, and I've worked really hard on doing, um, I've been working with Brett Bishop, who's a coach from Focus Schools and working around observations and getting into classrooms, having, uh, conversations with staff. So, um, I, I like to hypothesize that that might be a, um, a result of that work that's happening across the building, but also the observed for success platform that allows, um, walkthroughs to, walkthrough feedback to go through the platform and for observations. So last year's percentage favorable compared to this year's.
Liz, you're the gold star of all the principals, observations. No, sir.
Oh.
I can go in and look at the data of the whole district. Liz has been in classrooms very frequently. And that's pretty.
This is another one around school climate, which we've worked really hard, um, to maintain. I mean, Westminster, I think historically has always been a really magical place to learn and grow. Um, but we just have worked so collaboratively together to enhance an already existing site in school. And this is staff and leadership relationships. So my relationship with the staff here. And then this. Okay. This is going to be staff, teacher, staff, teacher, staff, teacher. Okay, so we have staff this year, staff last year, SU staff, teacher this year, teacher last year, SU teacher results.
It was really hard to get this all on.
Yeah.
I tried, we tried really, but it's a little cut off.
Yeah, what, what, what does it say? What was the professional learning?
Professional, like the description or?
Yeah.
It says perceptions of the amount and quality of professional growth and learning opportunities available to faculty and staff. That's how that category is described.
So that could be a response to the, um, professional development that we provide during our half days, our professional learning community work, our work on our instructional, our targeted instructional goals that we do as a Westminster staff and the SU-wide professional development offered throughout the year, like the lead to read, the, um, mixture of mathematics training, the EL trainings.
Well, not to rain and increase, but I would say then, I would read that bottom line as kind of hold up. What they're saying is.
Yeah, it's okay.
So I'm not sure, what do you think, where you live?
What about the, what about the resources? What are we talking about there?
Money?
Uh, they, Panorama labels that as perceptions of the adequacy of the school's resources.
Adequacy of funding.
Maybe accessibility to resources, maybe, uh, systems on how to request the resources, on guessing.
That's like our lowest percentage, but, but, I mean, not knowing what the questions are.
And this, where teachers are from, you know, regular education, from special education, from entitled one. So it's different, um, systems.
I would suspect that it also comes from the house people in perfect ways.
Right.
The same, same, so many interpret, we need more SDEs. And so maybe interpreted, we need more or better desks.
Right.
There's hard resources, there's soft resources.
And, and they're also saying they don't like this evaluation? Is that what that?
Not necessarily. Yeah, I think that, you know, what's not represented in the, in a, this is like an overview chart. What's not represented is the ability to drill down into each category, which every, every principal has that ability. And so by way of example, like when I go into the category of resources, there's response, favorable responses in questions ranging from twenty-nine percent as a low all the way up to ninety-three percent as a high. So there's a lot of variability in the responses in a particular category, but it averages out to be.
Sixty-two.
Right, exactly. So like the highest response in that category was, uh, for students who need extra support, how difficult is it for them to get the support that they need? And ninety-three percent of the staff or teacher, this staff, ninety-three percent, ninety-three percent of the staff responded favorable, meaning that it's not hard for students to get the resources that they need. That's their perception. Um, yeah, so with the, Liz has the ability to dig into these questions with, you know, with her staff.
Shall I, um, with the Panorama results, the district reminds us, is that including the high school?
Yep, that's it.
Right, so we can't, you know, another useful measure would be to look at the scores all elementary schools, so that we're just a little more comparable.
Yeah, yeah.
Because I imagine that the middle schoolers and the high schoolers might be bringing some. But these are the teachers.
Yeah.
Uh, yeah, right, I know it, but, but even so, I'm just thinking overall, and good point, yeah.
But it's just would be great for all.
Disaggregated, disentangled, yeah.
Well, the system, we, we are lucky in that the system can just, can do disaggregated. We can look at it through all kinds of different layers, socioeconomic status, students with disabilities, students of color. So it is a, it's a really valuable tool that helps us, you know, at the district level and then also for principals at the school level to, to, to get narrowed in on those areas.
Okay. Yeah, it's very helpful.
Thank you. Great. And then the last?
Yes, last one.
That's the last one, okay. I'm going to stop share, are there other questions on this? Stop sharing. Teen, any comments or questions from you?
No, I think, I think that it's some good results. I think that it looks like everything's moving in a good, positive direction.
I couldn't quite hear.
And the process of everything.
Yeah, definitely is, and thank you, Liz, and, you know, really appreciate the, the review.
Yes, thank you.
Yeah, no problem.
Thank you. All right, exciting. Yeah, and so your process for going through all of this with the teachers, how does that go?
Fair, it's not work, um, at a staff meeting. I will also review it with my special leadership team to reflect our, our continuous improvement plan and just to update it if needed based on our academic data. Because I think one of the map, map goals on our set, we actually reached, so we want to re, reset that map goal. Um, and then on the, the Panorama survey information, I'll bring with my team that comes to VAST Institute with me in, in June and use that to plan and tweak any systems or just reflect on, you know, our climate, our climate numbers weren't awesome, you know? So, um, we might want to think about that. But like you saw, there weren't a lot of changes. But like you saw, there weren't a lot of changes between last year and this year. And when you're already getting over 80% favorable, you know, you don't really want to be splitting hairs with the data, but you want to be thinking about your current systems and how you can improve them.
So this is a related question, but we had that wonderful presentation from the instructional leadership team quite a while.
Yeah.
We don't have the continuing support of Focus Schools, but you're carrying that forward here. I would guess this is our last school year to have that contract with it.
Yeah.
But how do you feel about, I mean, it looked to us like that was really integrated into the culture of the school.
Yeah, so we're planning our half days for next year already with the instructional leadership team and my PLC leaders to continue that, the structure. And then what else are we going to dig into during our half day any time? I will miss my coaching with Brett Bishop, that was really useful to me as a school leader. So, wow, still thinking about that, and I am.
And we are discussing at the SU level how we can potentially continue the district level where we used to bring all the IELTS and did a lot of sharing.
Yeah, which is great.
And, and so we're getting that cross pollination, so we're looking at how we might be able to maintain that without, even that without the support of Focus, you know, because we saw the value. How do we take what's doing well here and be able to share that with the schools and see it?
Okay, great. Is it time to move to Kat then?
Yeah, we're going to move to Kat. Kat Della, school nurse, she is a really integral part of our school community. She runs our school nurse office really efficiently and effectively. She is a great communicator with families and parents and students. We are so lucky to have her on our school, our school team. This, I actually had a student today, Kat, went to your office and you weren't in there and he looked at your schedule and said, isn't that, that works? But you were helping another student in another location. So Kat is going to share some of the school data. Oh, we're going to share. Yes, you got it.
All right. So, so the reason I'm doing this, I don't know if any other nurses do this in the district, but I just work for the state, and this is something that the state recommends nurses do work for, so that you can see a little bit of the backend, because it's hard to help. I can't share much information. But I just want you to see what I can show you. Okay, so my goal is to present the benefits of the school board supporting a full-time school nurse, me, at WCS, and how that has improved our school overall health and wellness as well as our. All right, so total visits, this was May 22nd, I didn't give them a chance to go through it after that, but we had 958 visits to the school nurse. 91% were able to return to class after seeing moi, and 83% returned within 10 minutes. 9% were dismissed to their parent guardian. That's pretty good numbers. And then the 90% of our students are fully vaccinated. We'd like to be at 95%. I can say that some students who have been unvaccinated for years are actually starting to get vaccinated. So from what I know about education with vaccines is, things are still, little bits of education is what I try to do for the years. Help families and work with them. WCS medical needs to, so, 928 students, is that right? So I have, we have 11% with respiratory diseases, 1.5% diabetes, 4.7 requiring EpiPens, 10.9% requiring inhalers, 7% food allergies, and 7% with psychological disorders like ADHD. And then 5.5% with daily medications, and this is only documented.
I'm so happy to inhale her. Respiratory.
Yes, yes. Without giving too much. We held a flu vaccine clinic for students and staff, hosted by North Star Health. One of their staff nurses came onsite and administered the flu vaccines to students and staff during the school day. So we did this two years in a row now. This year, we didn't have as much people participate because I think the options were more available for them elsewhere. But we did vaccinate 12 students for flu, and it was just during school day. So they just came out of class, it took about two minutes, and then we were back to class. They needed time on all later in the day. But it's a really cool thing that we do, and staff, we had a ton of staff to advantage of that. So. Something I've done this year, we have EpiPens in our school, we stock EpiPens. I have a standing order from Dr. Hall to administer those as needed. EpiPens are in really high demand, and we used to get them free through EpiPens for schools, and we can't get them anymore. So recently, there's been this new epinephrine, which is intranasal epinephrine, that was FDA approved, both adult and pediatric dose, it's actually more effective than that, and it's less scary for kids. It was just right up the nose when you're dying. And so I reached out to Leslie Goldman, our state rep, because our law only says EpiPens. And she, the next day, wrote a bill, and that bill has now been passed, and it is effective to lifers. So they're called NEPI, the nasal epinephrine, so I can get those free now that we have a law in place for our school, which it costs us $400 a year to get. Health education, this is with the teachers, we do this. Sixth grade, we did reproductive anatomy, menstruation, communicable versus non-communicable diseases and prevention. Fifth grade, we did reproductive anatomy, puberty, that was fun. Hygiene and clear communication and standing up for self, so these are all part of act one. And then fourth grade puberty and taking a stand against bullying, and then also that anti-hyping that happens through the full blow term, they put on their hands and you don't see it, except under a black light. So we shine it on their hands, and then they go wash their hands, and then we do it again, we see how well they did. Eight oh two smiles program. So this has five different tiers to it. We are at tier four, which is pretty awesome. We have a dental hygienist who comes onsite for one to two weeks out of the year and performs all these treatments listed on students as both cleanings for their teeth. Anybody can sign up for this. It's paid for through the Medicaid Administrative Cleaning or MAC grant. And so I got the data just recently for sealants. We were able to have 55 sealants placed on kids' teeth in Westminster. I'm sorry, 55 seals to the, to the 19 students that were speaking. She did cleanings on all of them, SDF treatments, that's to prevent cavities and decay. And a lot of education. The kids love her, she's great, she's very talkative, but very smart woman. She does a great job with them. So the total cost for us to have these 19 children seen was $2,397. So that's 51 hours to care for. But we didn't pay them, because it was done. Future goals, I want to increase participation in the smiles program. I think it's awesome. And then I want to increase the clinic participation, which I think if we hold it earlier in the year, we can do that. For myself, I'm working towards my master's degree specializing in education, because I want to keep helping keep it good. Provide education and supports families in hopes to improve our school vaccination rate, as I talked about. And then this is kind of a personal goal of mine, is to work towards eliminating food-based celebrations and advocating for more inclusive celebrations. You saw I had 7% of kids with food allergies. Imagine being in a classroom, having one of your friends bring in a spool tray of beautiful cupcakes and then not being able to eat one. It's hard. Not only that, but sometimes you get the kids who, what if the mom brings, brings in these beautifully decorated cupcakes? And then you've got the other maybe lower income kids, and they've got the shots of mini cupcakes. And there's that inequity in it. And plus the health issues behind it, like making food a celebration instead of fuel for your body. I'm a big advocate for non-food celebrations, which there's so many. These are just the list of some of them. Like, my daughter was in sixth grade last year for her birthday. She, I gave her a tiara and a sash, and her teacher was great and secretly had all of her classmates sign a card and say something nice about her. So you can do stuff like that, you can let them sign a death certificate. Bring in a collage of pictures from baby to power roll there now, plenty of options and many more. But we should have to share that. That's it.
Great, any questions?
I just have an idea, based on these pictures. Have you ever done staff, you know, baby picture and, and baby picture and have them figure out who you are?
We did that around school pictures. We had a bulletin board where everyone put their old school picture. It was really so fun. And then the day of school pictures, we labeled who was who. So for a few weeks, kids were just like guessing and, you know.
That was stunning, it really stumped them too.
Yeah, definitely.
Thanks. Any other questions for Kat?
I, I like the idea of the non, non, non-food or not sugar rewards. Because that's, that's like, I mean, I mean, this is, this is nitpicking, because you guys do a phenomenal job. But sometimes I'm like, you know, I, I don't give my kids a lot of sugar. And then every day they're like, oh, we got trouble by the foot. And I'm like, what, wait, what? It's hard to, it's hard to, especially with the kids who have trouble focusing already. Then you get them hopped up on sugar and they, you know, how are they, they're like a pervert. Yes, so I do like that. That being said, I know I just delivered like a huge thing of sweets for the brothers. But that's different.
Go, yes, team, please.
I just want to say how much I appreciate Nurse Kat. She has been so helpful. The kids feel so comfortable with her. I just am very appreciative of everything you do, Kat, for the school and how like welcome and safe you make the kids feel. So, and I love your little things that you send home in the newsletter every week. Those are so helpful. I am a big Nurse Kat fan, I have to say.
Thank you.
In the, hopefully your slides and with those from Deb and Shelly can make sure we, board has something happen.
Yeah, if you send them to me, I will.
I mean, for the public, they'll be able to see the information by watching the, the recording. But I'd like the boards to have the data.
I have one more thing, is the school, I remember reading this in the new bill, the new bill, the new bill state for our education. So one of the things in there was the school nurse not being specific to, like, spreading you among a million other schools. Like, this is, this is good data so that we know all the, I mean, but like, you know, all the good things that you're doing. We need, we need a nurse for this school all time. Yeah, any school, that's what I'm saying, yeah. We, we can't, we can't spread you so thin.
Not just ban into the high school.
Right.
Education is a huge precedent. If you educate them now, that improves our community health for your own and adults.
Yeah. Absolutely. The 11% of children with a respiratory ailment of some kind, what kind is that? I mean, say more about that. That, that just strikes me as a high percentage, as you know.
I mean, you've got asthma, you've got reactive airway disease, another one, sometimes it's allergy-based. So, like, one, the thing with that, that I worry about at the nurse's triggers. So I worry about pollen triggers during allergy season. So like, when allergies started to get high, it was probably found me, I was running around making sure all the hepar filters were clean. We've got, like, people will wear heavy perfume sometimes, and I'm like, can you go lighter next time? Because that can be a trigger, or maybe they cleaned something up with bleach, not thinking about it, which is a huge asthma trigger. So, yeah, that's my, probably the rest of the story. It's like, my goal is to make sure we don't have those triggers, just hope it's a safe environment.
And do we have any idea how our percentages compare to children of these ages in other settings?
I don't. I would love it if every nurse in the district did a similar presentation, and then we could kind of do comparison like we do with the other data.
Probably, given the privacy issues and such, we have, we have at least one school that's too small for that. Which you could do district-wide, you could get a sense of that potential. I'm just curious. And I'm always looking at trends also.
Diabetes is type two. Right, yeah, not type two.
I told that we didn't have any kids with type two.
Well, you don't.
Hopefully we'll prevent that from non-food release.
Well, thank you, and echoing team, thank you for all you can add.
Now I don't know how to stop sharing.
Okay, what was that? Then we'll move on to.
Thanks.
Thank you. We'll move into all policies and if you can help us with, with that. I actually think all of these policies were passed by the SU board.
Yes, they've been passed by the SU board, they've been passed by the Rockham board. So we're just rolling them through to different board. We started the SU because many of them are large and overstepping or overreaching. But what we tried to do is look at all of our policies. Many of them are almost 20 years old, and policies should really be updated every three years. This is a common norm, so we're trying to do it efficiently. All of these, which are As, so A20, A21, A22, 23, 24, 30, and 31, all have to do with governance. So boards and governance. So, and they are reviewed on with the committee. Many of them are what are considered model policies. And so the words, I mean, that needs to happen is just like we say, WAESU and its member districts. So. But. Yeah, I, I mean, so our goal is to kind of go through, there's, there's A, B, C, D, E, maybe F, so there's a student section, there's a, there's a community, and something like that, we'll be rolling these out. I don't know if there's any specific questions on any.
Okay, I will, I will, we need a motion on the floor, and we could approve them all at once. You can go through them individually, I think the board, the issue.
Yeah, Rocky Ant is approving that though.
Need a motion?
We approve the, the policies as they rise and blend in.
Okay, motion on the floor, any discussion? I am, you know, I certainly think we should approve all of these. I've got a couple of comments about them, but they're not anything that would get in the way of our going ahead in voting. So, any other comments or questions? Okay, all those in favor of approving the set of policies as presented to us, as a group? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And team? Okay, thank you. All right, so the policies are all approved. Just two, two small things. One thing I noticed in the public participation in meetings section, it talks about giving the public the opportunity to speak specific to any agenda item that calls for action, calls for action by the board. And that's really not anything I've seen practiced in our schools here. We have tended to just do the public comment. And, you know, I guess I would, I would say that if we had a large group of people here, you know, for an item, that, that according to this policy, we create the opportunity for any member of the public to make comment about what it is we're going to vote. Just be that. But Andy, any comment about how the others are handling that?
Um, I believe the interpretation right now, so you're talking about the public input on items not on the agenda?
No, I'm talking about the policy that, that has to do with public participation. It, it, it calls for the public, public comment on agenda items. When the number of people, uh, they will, the chair will ask for comments on agenda items before action is taken by the board.
So the interpretation of that has been you have a public comment section that, and that's why we publish. We publish the agenda ahead of time so that the public has an opportunity to know what will be on the agenda.
Right.
And during public comment time, they can speak to that before you take action on that agenda item.
All right.
Which is why we try not to do an adjustment to an agenda to add it. Public would not have fair warning that you're taking action on that item. So that's the interpretation of that.
Yeah, I'm fully aware of that and that makes complete sense and, and.
So there hasn't been an individual as you go through.
Right. So what you're saying is the interpretation of this is that any, any public comment is to be done in the public comment period and they can specify that when you get to this agenda item. This is my view about that. I want you to know it.
Correct.
Yeah.
And, and so we've, um, and there have, there have been some boards that have allowed a little bit of latitude depending on the topic.
Sure.
Um, um, but typically everyone has adhered to that understanding that there is a time for public comment. And we posted that agenda ahead of time and someone can speak to a specific item on that.
Right, that's very helpful. Thank you. And the other question I had has to do with the the education of board chairs. And part of the language says that jointly the chairs and the superintendent would have eight hours of training each year. And I've always interpreted that each chair needs to take responsibility for getting educational opportunities and participating in them. But what's your interpretation of that, doing it jointly?
Um, I welcome it. We can't always get it. Um, but I know that the, uh, training the V S B A does along with the G S A, that is part of that whole thing. And I, um, but I think it's something that collectively with all of our boards, we could tighten that up. Um, figure that out. I mean, when we've done, tried to do some of the all-board trainings. Majority of the time, all the board chairs are there during the. But we could create something that's much more.
Right, yes.
Marge, I liked that one all-board meeting that we did this year with. I thought that was cool. Together for once, yeah, because we hardly ever do that. And then the other thing that I really appreciated, and I don't know if I could call it training here, but it was, um, board retreat we did here. I thought that was really helpful and useful. I may not to put it on you again at your house, but maybe we should do something like that.
Agreed. Yeah, I love it. Okay.
And we had proposed an all-board meeting in August just before school.
Okay, good.
So, um, with the idea of just having a good beginning in the school year and kind of briefing everybody.
That, that will help and that follows up. That's great. Okay, so that's the policies. And then the old and unfinished business, the first topic is the summer school program.
Yeah, I'll share, uh, the questions I brought to the central office from our last meeting. Um, one being, would we be able to receive the special ed reimbursement for E S Y? We will not be able to get the special ed reimbursement. Um, if a student receives one-on-one support throughout the school day and they would need that throughout our summer program with student services fund that staffing and they would. Um, we will not be able to apply for subsidy. Um, I, so with the Department of Children and Families, um, we are, we do not currently have a childcare license. We're not a current childcare, uh, facility for that. So we could, if we were to do that, our staff who work the summer program would have to apply for, um, background checks and fingerprints through the Department of Children and Families, not through, currently it's through the A O A. So now it would be through the Children and Families. And that would not be able to be have to be completed by July seventh. Um, Food Services. Um, we asked, you know, how would food services work over the summer? How much would it cost for food services to make and serve breakfast and lunch? Um, depending on the, upon the number of children, we would either have a nutrition staff member on site cooking and serving meals or serving meals that would be prepared at another site. The meals would be reimbursed, reimbursable through the summer food service program. So there would be no charge for meals. For staffing. Is it possible to have contracts ready by July seventh? Um, I could start them on the beginning to mid-June. So yes, that would, that is a possibility. Transportation, Stan said, um, it would depend on the route, most likely stop by stop. And he would need more information about if people wanted transportation, uh, bus transportation to and from the summer program, he would need to know exactly where the kids were.
And it would most likely not be door-to-door service.
He said, yes.
I, I, I know, we, we had to follow a conversation. So it, because some of it has, I mean, it all depends on where the kids live and how many drivers we have.
The one question that was not answered was would a square, right?
I have that answer. We, we've had a couple of meetings since then. So, um, we would not be going with Square, which is a brand. So, um, we've had some conversations with Masoma Bank, um, who can provide electronic, um, point-of-sale device. That's another term. That's what Square is. It's just a point-of-sale. Um, the, uh, um, there, I won't go in, the, the Skoma can basically sort things out so that when, um, a, a device is used, those dollars can go directly into a fund, like an account through Masomas that we track the dollars so that if we do one for food services, money would go into food services. If we did one for after-school summer, you know, Westminster would go into after-school summer programming. Um, and there's, um, two opportunities. One is, um, setting up a website where you go on click, like Westminster Summer Programming and make their payment there. Um, and the other one is having an actual unit like Square. Where they would come and swipe their card. We most likely would roll out with a unit for July seventh. Because to build a website and everything like that takes a little bit of time. Um, the one thing that that will not do, we have to work a little bit more behind the scenes, is it basically is going to take all your payments and it puts it in a bucket. So you won't know that Nicole gave you a hundred dollars and Liz gave you fifty dollars and Karen gave you two hundred dollars. So we'll have, there is a, another third party that's used that you would have to use to do that kind of accounting. But for a July seventh start, because we want to really vet those out and, and look at it. It's like food service already uses once and we use the same piece. Uh, you know, the, the, what's this, we should have a unit come up and, you know, basically make the payment is either down or putting it into a spreadsheet to keep the accounting and then we can backfill. We go to the, it is very possible and opportunistic to put it up. I told, I told Ed that we'd be looking into July fifth. Knowing that we'd need a couple of days. So, um, there's another meeting coming up. So.
So does, I, I did have a chance to talk with him briefly about this on Monday. Uh, and is, is he comfortable with the solution now?
Yeah, because, because what they did, they actually looked at Square and what Square can do for. And then they went to Masoma. And, um, so one of the things is there's a percentage charge on every point-of-sale. That is from Visa or Mastercard. That's not Square, that's not the bank, that's not anyone's, Visa, Mastercard, ones who do those charges. I've had that percentage on. Um, and so, but Masoma is willing to waive a ton of fees. They're willing to give us the units for free, um, that we would use. Where, um, with Square, there's a cost involved there. So this is a, they can do everything and they can do a little bit more in Square's hands because they can, um, on the backend, they can sort out those buckets. They can create a lost team. Um, but they would create those different buckets. Um, so we'd have Westminster Summer Program. And that might, where Square can do all of that.
Very interesting. Nice question. If someone wanted to pay by check, can they do that?
Um, I had, I, I want to go back and talk to Ed. I think that we've had in the past some open concerns because you get a balance check. And then someone's got to rack that down. There's a cost that comes to us for the balance check. And.
But isn't, wouldn't that be true now? So I'm curious about those Visa and Mastercard. Because a lot of people have bank cards that are, that they use at their Visa and Mastercard. So it would be the same issue to me if you're worried about people not having enough money because the check comes from, I, I know that. Mastercard, it's a bank card.
Yeah.
And it goes right to my.
Yes, the debit card. Yeah. It's connected to your.
Debit card. So will you, so the reason I'm asking this question is the same thing would be true. Would the same thing be true with the debit card?
No, because as they swiped it, it would, it would have not.
Tell you right away.
We would not be in a situation where we're having to track. In the past, we have had to chase quite a few parents, unfortunately. And depending on the size of the check, it's still ten dollars or something like that for every balance check.
Right.
Um.
I just worry about people who don't use. I mean, I, I, if everybody who uses credit cards. I'm just asking that question because sometimes people who don't have credit cards.
Yeah, and then what we're trying to do is minimize, um, opportunities for.
Oh, teams in the waiting room.
No, just to get back in, uh, I'm, we're trying to minimize those opportunities where if someone's got to collect checks and now they're holding on to them, they've got to deposit those checks, which means someone's got to take them to the bank and deposit that check.
Sure, sure, sure.
And those, those opportunities. We don't want to get in a situation where we're taking cash. Uh, again, there's liabilities in that. I don't want to put any of our employees in a situation where they've accepted cash. Um, so, uh, but I, I will follow up with that one.
That's great. I, I just, but, but they, the, the device does take a debit card.
Yeah.
So it's not the same as a credit card.
Yes. It's a credit card, but it's a debit.
But I mean, it is, yeah, and, and people, you know, the amount of debt is credit card related. So any, anything else in the?
Sorry, I, yeah, I think you got one left.
No, that, that was for the question that was presented last, that were generated last morning.
So my question, we talked about twenty thousand, twenty thousand dollar maximum unemployment for the school. Do we now know anything about the numbers of people who would, who might apply and not necessarily pay and whether it would be that twenty thousand or?
I don't know if I understood your question.
Well, I think you said, obviously, the regular enrollment, more likely, because it's paid for time. And it gets smaller and smaller. Eventually it costs more money. We said, okay, we'll pay up to twenty thousand dollars, we'll subsidize it up to twenty thousand dollars. And let's say when you send people shop. Um, what do we, how do we, how do we cut this off or make sure?
Yeah, I mean, I can't, I don't, I can't guarantee that in June, people haven't found other childcare at this point. I mean, we did put interest out, um, a few weeks ago, the survey, but I'm not sure since they still don't know that schools can be able to provide that, they found something else. I haven't put the addition.
We didn't put that in, in your motion.
Say again?
I don't think we put that in the motion. I think the motion was just to encourage Liz to ask this question.
When, so I guess, we, before we do anything, we'd have to set the deadlines. So by this time, we're, we're at this, on this day, we're going to publicize this, start taking registrations. Energy means a certain threshold can go when it doesn't. So, um, it might be the case. We can't keep on letting it hang.
That's great.
We actually set a date.
I think I would also advise that on any contract we write with employees, we would have to have a clause that it's dependent on enrollment. Because if you only had five families, you had a lot of staff that showed up. Are, were willing to do it in the off contract. You, you would be paying for those, you'd be responsible, pay those staffs. We'd want to have that clause on there. We don't, you don't have the students and you don't need the staff.
I also just don't think we should do that because if you're a parent and you sign up for something that has a clause, like have certain amount of people. And you don't hit that threshold, then it's througled out underneath you. Like I, it's my, it's my like, I guess it's my purpose to either do it or not, but not have a.
I, I.
I don't know.
If I can clarify what I was trying to say. I was saying on the employee contract. Not on the, so if you have five families show up, you need a certain number, you only need two staff. If you have twenty or twenty-five or three kids show up, you need more staff. So the, if you, but if you give contracts out, assuming you're going to have thirty kids and only five show up, we don't need all the staff. So you're not denying students. I, I'm talking about our staff piece. Of, of being able to have some flexibility with staff so that, you know, we, again, don't need three or four staff members to help keep some more kids.
Yeah.
Well, that's an interesting twist then to say, this will happen if you're up to a verb, she'll stop. As far as families concerned, if you sign up, it's going to happen. And then if there's only three families, we do it anyway.
That's, that's, you have to make that decision. I guess what I'm saying is what's your floor? Minimum, if you don't have, if you don't want to get ten families to sign up, ten students to sign up, are you going to write it?
Which is ten families.
That's how a lot of these boards, you, you had, you did your government's line. I mean, I remember that was a lot of times that happened. We were signing our kids up. There's not enough people sign up.
Team wants to weigh in, please. Go ahead, team.
How many staff do we know can, uh, like are committed to be able to do this? So like if thirty kids sign up, but we have two staff, that's the other problem.
I don't have members on staff that would be able to at this point.
You had said at our last meeting that there were a number of people, you did not consider that a problem.
Yeah.
Uh, we have what, twenty families, twenty-one?
Right.
Something like that expressed interest. So, um, what, do you have a recommendation now that we've answered a number of these questions?
I think that, uh, the summer program, it's a ripple effect, right? So we would have to get, that would all have to happen within a month. And I also have to protect my whole building from stress. But, you know, and because that means that we have to designate which rooms are going to be used for the summer program. And this is the last few years for teachers to be here to understand that, to set up, to then implications that have behind me. And I mean, those are all things that can be resolved in this conversation, if we were able to have this conversation months ago. Because we would be able to plan a program, be prepared for that. So within a month, we would have to send out registration. So people would have to get the registration signed up immediately. Um, because teachers are done in a little over a week. Um, so we'd have to get students assigned up. Yeah, and then we would have to organize. I don't think organizing programming would be that difficult because I think him has it set. Um, and then we would have to make sure that all the other players in the SU like food services, transportation and the finance department is ready to turn on a dime as well. So the school would be able to send out registration, sign up families, assign programming. But then I'm asking all these other people in the supervisor at the central office to turn around and accommodate the school.
I'm impressed because I feel like you just described how they all work. You said you're sort of.
I did, but I mean, them answering my question and them actually putting my, the, the plan to action are two different things, right? Food service is saying, yes, we can do that. So now I'm calling them tomorrow and saying, we're gonna do that thing that you said we could do.
I mean, so, yes, are we going to find a way to make it work?
Sure.
This is Liz, she'll say, yes. Um, if we were talking a hundred kids or something like that, it'd be much more challenging to turn on a dime than, than a, a small percentage. But I think, you know, without going back to Melissa, just like, and asking her, that's food services, you know, what's her floor? Because, I mean, if, if she's going to have, like to prepare meals and do those things, how much is it, is she going to need to have on staff to do that? Is it one person or two persons, whatever? Or is that just absorbed with people doing the summer meals? So I just happen to have that follow-up. But if we're anticipating a certain number, that would be helpful for her, how fast she can do, to do everything. So, um, with transportation, you know, there are drivers who are willing to, uh, work over the summer and have worked over the summer. So, um, I'm sure we could probably, that wouldn't be an issue at all. Uh, contracts, we can get, you know, done in a couple, you know, week or two, we know who those people are. Again, we're not fucking a lot of staff, we're fucking a small amount of staff. It's just, same, kind of the same. The next two weeks or, or a week and a half, or if there's something going on every night, you know, so that's all. We just need to know. Yeah.
Yeah, I can send out registration. See how many people, I mean, I think, maybe you would know, like if you send a deadline for preparing.
Then we'd know.
The number of numbers. Yep. And then you'll know when people are less on it and move forward. Yeah.
I'm going to recuse myself from, it's not a mistake, because I'm a student. But.
Because what?
Nonetheless, I'm going to recuse myself.
That's what I started to go.
But, yes, both of them.
Yes, you may.
I have a motion that we authorize Liz to make a decision to go or not go in, in the time of, um, when she's ready. And if she's, if, when the time comes, she feels it can't be done, then you will say no. Can't be done, you say yes. But I'm, it's, I, I, we can't keep on coming back and forth. I think the point should just say, do it or don't do it. Do it if you can or don't do it. The migrant motion would be proposed that we authorize Liz to run this program if she feels it's feasible to do so.
Is that all?
Yeah.
Okay. We can, we could. Well, so that's the motion, uh, you know, to authorize Liz to, uh, make a decision, meaning that, that you'll go ahead and explore it further. And, and then in your professional judgment, looking at all the considerations, um, cost, number of families, staffing, wear and tear. Stress, you know, all of that, all of that kind of thing. Um, I, I would be comfortable with that. And you could probably figure that out within two weeks.
Yeah, I mean, we would put out registration.
And, and we, we'd be in a week.
Yeah.
I don't think, I don't think we can wait two weeks, because two weeks, school's out.
Yeah.
Yeah. Whatever.
Yeah.
Um, yeah, and, and. Go ahead, Team.
Sure.
I just feel like this is a huge ask to put on the people who would be in charge of it. I, I think it's unreasonable and like verging on disrespectful. And I don't, I'm not calling anyone in this group disrespectful, but I think putting on a summer program is a huge endeavor. And I don't know if we are fully realizing that. And I think it is June 5th. And to say that we, this would be done and easily done and a reasonable ask for anyone who is doing this is, is not, is, is unreasonable.
Well, thank you, um, Team, for that observation. I think I also think about, um, Kim and her, you know, I really, last time I spoke with her, she really wanted to do this. She's organized and she's the one who would do it. So the way Team is speaking, um, you know, that, uh, I, I understand that. You know, I think it's a complicated issue. Um, and I appreciate Charlie, you're putting forward a motion that would leave that up to, up to Liz. I think, uh, Team is saying that it's just not reasonable this year. We, we moved to such a late date, it feels rushed. And then if that's the case, then once again, I worry about the children. There's another aspect of this that you talked about before, wanting to do really focused, um, to work with a set of students this summer. Is that still something you're going to do no matter what?
No, because it would be, oh, it would be spending unbudgeted money. Right, I don't have that budgeted, but I would, it wouldn't be as much as, as the summer program is budgeted. Um, and so if we don't do the summer program, I have two staff members who are skilled and willing to target, um, a specific set of students to combat summer slide. And they would be touching, um, connecting with those students and those families on a regular basis throughout the summer to keep reading and literacy skills happening over the summer.
How many students?
Twenty.
About twenty students. Like in lieu of?
In lieu of summer programming, yes, because I, um, you know, we didn't get the funding and, you know, so I moved forward with alternative.
So they would be coming here to school when it was, those twenty.
It could be, I was leaving it up to my two staff members, and they could be over the phone, they could be over student, they could come to their classroom for a tutoring session. It really was what was going to work for the child and the family. Um, because I know everyone's summer schedules are all over the place, but it was really about keeping, um, a specific student, a set of students who have come leaps and bounds over the year, but we know what happens over summer. And we just wanted to support those students reading.
Sure. I mean, I think I said this last time, but I, my preference is to really put our efforts into after school and then maybe regrouping and thinking about next year's summer. You know, that's. I mean, I guess we're probably going to be applying for the grant again. As SU or not?
Um, we have not had that conversation.
Yeah, I mean, I did, yes.
No, it's just, it's, it's a huge lift. That grant is a huge, huge lift. And so I, I think that we were to want to go for it again. I don't know if we have the capacity in the SU. That's part of it is like, it needs a grant.
Right.
Someone that's.
Somebody professional.
But you could have, um, for free of the school's charge, you can have Y Aspire or the Boys and Girls Club have a use this school as a site.
Yeah.
And hire the same people who worked for our after-school program here would just work for the company that's using our site. And so there'd still be after care. It just would be funded differently and I can format it differently.
And for clarification, if we were to go for the grant again.
Yeah.
That would not be for next year. It would potentially be for the year following.
It would not be for next summer.
Next summer is, is the year following. So we're, we're going in F, we're going in F Y twenty-six. For F Y twenty-seven.
Yeah, I guess I just feel like we're way too late for this year. We need to bail on this year and focus on, that's my preference. So all of this, um, would come out of the budget that's been approved for fiscal year twenty-six. Uh, the money was not set aside, was not specified, you didn't plan for that. Um, we also have other unknowns, potential costs for this school district. Uh, we know that as well. Um, I, I personally am comfortable leaving it in hands, uh, as the motion indicated. Um, but, um, I really appreciate everybody's concerns about this. And, you know, I, I, one more time, I don't know how you feel about.
Um, I think it's a pretty heavy lift to put on a robust program. I think that schools really are, what is under our umbrella, what we should be focusing on is academics. And as a school, that's something I feel like we, we are responsible for. Um, but I wonder what level of robust academic support we would be able to provide at this point in a summer program. Um, the tutoring and the academic portion of our summer programs in years past, when it was just Westminster Center School Summer Program, were pretty robust and pretty direct. Um, and that kind of that watered down as we moved to an SU summer program. But at this point in the game, I'm not sure who I, who's coming. And that was usually, so if I don't know the students are coming, I don't know the student need, right? Until the days teachers are leaving, right? And then I'm asking teachers for specifics on summer tutoring for these students. It doesn't feel like a realistic timeline to provide a robust.
Okay. So the motion is then to just leave it up to you. Maybe we should, maybe we should call the law. Okay. So the motion, uh, on the floor is, uh, to authorize Liz to make a decision whether or not to provide some.
Or authorizing what?
Yeah, or authorizing this to make that, to make that decision.
Um, I have a question on that.
Mm-hmm.
Um, if, uh, for center programming, um, does it need to be specific to like full day, six-week summer camp? Or can it be center programming of, uh, targeted literacy intervention throughout summer? But, like, can I use the same motion to move forward with planning that?
Maybe up to a certain dollar. I actually think those are two different motions.
Okay.
Um, I, I think that the, uh, that the, the, the focused support for twenty students this summer is a tangible set of motion.
Okay.
Yeah, and I think this motion is to authorize Liz to make a decision to go or not go for a five-week full day summer. That's what that motion is. So we'll go ahead and vote, Team, you get to vote.
This is to vote.
This is to. Authorize Liz to make a decision herself whether or not to offer a five-week summer program full day.
So to clarify, I'm not voting on, like, I'm just leaving it up to Liz and not, if I vote no, that means Liz doesn't get the choice? But because summer camp could still run? Or I vote no?
It's her decision.
So, so technically, just if I can parse this out, if you were to vote, if you were to vote, if this motion were to fail. Someone else could make another motion to say, I want to run summer camp, a college camp, programming by day a week. And then that would have to be voted on. If you were to, if this motion were to pass, then Liz would.
Make the decision.
Look at like, can I get staff, can I get all this stuff? And then she would make a decision, yes or no.
It might as well just to talk about something hypothetical of a program. We're voting, the program we've all been talking about, Liz is going to decide, is she going to run it or not? But when she says no. All we're voting on is, is she going to decide, giving her the authority to decide to run the program we've been talking about?
Or not.
Or not.
Punching the decision. Yeah.
I, I don't think that's fair. We're in charge of the budget. Like, we, we're the ones who brought the budget to the.
You're going to vote no, Team, right? Like, we should take responsibility for this decision, is what you're saying?
Yes.
Okay.
I don't know how to. But I'm going to abstain. I'm just going to abstain from this vote because I disagree with the motion.
Is it a tip? I mean, we're not in discussion. Sorry, I called the, I called the vote. I'm going to vote yes. I vote yes.
I'm saying.
That actually, um, has.
I mean, what do you want? Charlie, I don't know if you, you abstained, I'm saying, or if you have to recuse yourself. No, because, because an extension votes in the affirmative.
That's good.
Recuse, and just want to be, I want to be careful for you.
That's exactly right. And no, no vote for me at all.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, well, that means then that it, uh, that it passes and it's in your hands. And, um, I appreciate Team, your concern that that's not fair to this, that was duly recorded. Uh, and, um, despite the potential around all of that, we just, it's a complicated issue. And I would like you to look once again at the families that are involved and, you know, what their options might be. I think we've talked at other times about generating lists of other things that they might do if the school's not running the program again. Uh, we're just trying to be of help to the, to the students. Having said that, I'd like to entertain a motion just, uh, to have Liz, uh, plan to provide the literacy support to those approximately twenty students that you have identified who need that help over the summer. I'd like to.
So moved, I'd like to make up.
Can't hear you what?
I said, so moved, I'd love to make.
I can't hear you.
You said, so moved, I would love to make that move.
Oh, okay. Team made the motion to authorize Liz to develop the special literacy program for those twenty, approximately twenty students, uh, who need it.
This is literacy and math.
Literacy and math. Um, I was just focusing. Do you have the motion, Nicole?
Question.
Um, okay, is a motion on the floor? Uh, question.
Is this, is this, is this about, is this a follow-up if the other program isn't happening or is this an addition?
An addition. Um, and we don't have an idea. Um, I don't think there would be, it would be a stipend. Was it, I would like to do a stipend position, but I talked to Andy about it and I don't know if I can do a stipend. But I don't.
We have to work on the, the teachers per DM, so, from the teacher. I mean, we, I mean, the rule of thumb is fifty dollars an hour. Um, you know, an average, it could be a slightly higher, slightly, you know, but one might be higher, one might be lower than fifty, but use about fifty dollars an hour. You know, um, that, that's how I do it for budgeting to try and figure it out. Almost involved.
So, but what's an approximate range of money that we're talking about to provide the service?
How many hours is?
I was thinking in stipend terms, I wasn't thinking in hourly terms. So I would have to, I don't have that figure because I was thinking in stipend. And I was only thinking like up to ten.
Okay, well, that's helpful. Okay. Can I have a follow-up question?
Okay.
Wait, wait, so can I just clarify, is this only in addition to summer school? Or is this, could potentially be, even if summer, the summer program doesn't happen, the tutoring could still happen? Karen, I know you want to call the question, but I think we need, this is like not a small issue and I think we need to have conversation about it.
No, no, I'm with you. I, I think that we made one decision already about. You know, Liz, looking at the summer school, we already made that decision. And this decision is about, do we support this program for literacy that she described? And that's the motion now.
Right.
And that's why I then asked the question, because we had a discussion and so forth. Yeah. And, and you might not have been able to hear it, uh, Team, we, this, this would be in addition. This program, if we vote to approve it, will go no matter what. Okay. All right, so, uh, in the room, almost in favor of this motion?
Aye.
Aye. All right, and Team, are you vote?
Yes.
So that was a unanimous vote in support of your developing and offering this special program this summer. And then we'll wait to hear from you, uh, about the other and the feasibility of that. Uh, and I believe that, given the amount of money involved that we're here, if we do have.
Okay.
So, um, a quick, um, World School Community Alliance update. This is just to say that, and I think everybody probably knows this, but if you don't. The conference committee discussing, um, the Education Bill four fifty-four. Uh, dis, disintegrate. um, dis, disintegrated, that's not the word I wanna use. But they ceased talking on Friday of last week, and so they're on a recess right now. And it was just really fascinating. The Senate said one thing, the House said another. And now the result is that the, um, representatives and senators on that committee, we think, will come back next week, Thursday and Friday, are not positive. But it looks as if the legislature will convene on Monday, June sixteen, and that this might be an item. But all that remains is real concern. Absolutely, and so we'll see where that goes. And with that, let's do some directors comments. Oh, wait, I have one more thing to do. Our one thousand two hundred fifty-dollar contribution was received. And I'll hand Nicole an email, but just thanks the board for that support for the record. There, so I'll hold that out. Now we can go to director's comments. Teen, thank you for fitting this in. Can you, uh, make some comments on your way, traveling as you are?
I have no comment. I appreciate, well, actually, I do have a comment. Um, I appreciate, um, that even though we are not all in agreement, but we are still having conversations. And I appreciate Kat and Shelley and Deb's presentation and everything that has happened this school year, because everyone's been working really hard and the kids are happy.
Thank you so much. Wonderful. Archie?
Yeah, thanks for a wonderful school year. It's been really, really great. Um, and I also think that, uh, Kat is doing a wonderful job, Shelley, and Deb also. Huge assets. The data, looking at the data is really good. I feel like we've made such huge improvement in the data.
Yeah.
And that's like, I mean, even in this short time, the new curriculum has helped. And, um, the instruction, yeah, it's great, really wonderful. Thank you.
Thank you, ladies, for sharing all of this stuff in the right direction we're bringing with the people here today. Judges. Um, thank you for what you've done around these summer programs and whatever work you're doing ahead. And I'll make a decision when it's effective.
Thank you. Well, I, I echo what Teen said also, the fact that we can disagree and have conversations and be able to learn more things as we move along. And Liz, um, so much for all of your efforts. And, you know, I feel like, um, even though I don't have a child in this school, I certainly know that it shines. So I. So I'd like to add some thanks to Andy and the leadership team overall, because what we've seen with those data results tonight, the last three years, kind of focused effort, trying to build systems here that all of our staff, teachers, and all of those involved. Especially here in Westminster, to see the fruits of that effort. And we knew that it would take time, but unfortunately, not all schools have seen their students' achievement and well-being, uh, social, emotional, uh, health bounce back as well as we're seeing here. And I just so appreciate the individualized attention and the skills that you're helping to have the staff develop, but again, with leadership and in the team at the central office as well. I, it, it's steady progress. Thank you for all of that. We take none of it for granted. Um, but I'm just really appreciative.
Guys, you want another little comment?
Yes.
Uh, this is a, a brief, brief series of conversation on the bus. Behind me is a sixth grade girl, not usually sophisticated normally, but it sounded with a very boisterous young, uh, first grader, who was very wild, very loud. And he really calmed down, this, this second girl, and at one point I heard her say to him, uh, so, so, listen. Keep inside your head. Oh, my goodness, you got it. And he did. So I don't know where she got that from, but I do, we came from one social, emotional, daily programs in either. So at one point, she's continuing to repeat.
Very good. A date and time of the next meeting, the next meeting would be July third. I think that makes no sense to have them, um, first Thursday of, uh, July. The third Thursday is July seventeen. I wonder whether we need a board meeting in July, whether we, whether skip.
Typically ask that we try and leave July as a recess, that administrators can, can find. But obviously, if we need something, we would ask a meeting, which we would then use that July.
Seventeen, eight.
Yeah, um, um, just because, um, like, I think you're fully hired, it's off the top of my head, but if there were not, not. Oh, but I mean.
Yeah, we're all hired.
You know, and, and I don't wanna jinx this in any way, because it's really great to be really fully hired, you know, but those are typically the reasons, or if there was some reason we needed to come back.
Right.
If, you know, an update that needed to happen.
But then, other than that, if we, if we don't have a meeting in July, unless a meeting is needed, a special meeting, Nicole, then our next regular meeting would be August seventh. Okay? Okay, great. First Thursday. Okay, good. And are you taking some time off this summer?
Absolutely. Okay, well, I might be running a summer program, I don't know. Um, but yeah, I'll be taking I T that week off and later in July, I'll be taking some time off early in July.
Okay, then, great. All right, then let's adjourn the meeting at seven fifty-two. Thanks, everybody.